This is a special, essentially committee of the whole. I mean, this is a, uh, this is not a voting meeting of the board. Um, correct, folks? That we're, we're not voting on anything tonight. We're not voting on the budget. We're not voting on any other items tonight. So there will be no votes. But this is an opportunity to, um, announce that it's Mary Grover's birthday. So, um, we're having this special meeting to announce Mary Grover's birthday. Because Mary is here with us and not with her family, frankly, who is busy doing other things today. Mary shared that earlier today. That's, uh, uh, gonna celebrate your birthday when it's good for everybody else, not me. Okay. So Amanda is with us. Amanda is, um, home where she should be because that's better. Good for you, Amanda, and you're not sniffing on us here. That's great.
I'm gonna try my best. I kinda have a little bit of laryngitis, so I'm gonna try my best. It might be the best night ever for everybody.
No, we appreciate that, Amanda, because this is Dr. Brown's opportunity, the superintendent, Dr. Brown, to present, uh, the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three to us and the community. And, um, that is really the, uh, item on the agenda. So, we're gonna go ahead and get started.
All right. Thank you, Ms. A. Thank you for being, thank you, Mary Grover. Thanks. This, this will be the first in the history of the city school district called hybrid budget presentation. So we're excited about that making history tonight. And it's also the eleventh funding request that I, as superintendent, am able to put in front of the board. Um, so it's an honor and privilege to have this opportunity. I wanna make sure everyone can still hear, just that everyone can still hear. Let me see. All right. All right, cool. Awesome.
There we go.
And so if you can bring up the images so that folks at home and folks in the room can see, probably wrong if we share what we're thinking. So the thing about this, uh, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three funding request, we always start with the same image, um, our vision and mission. Yes, it's on, what, close to twenty thousand t-shirts now, but it does mean something to this community. And what we're gonna put forward to the community this evening as well as a budget request, is gonna be something that we feel would help us meet our vision and mission. Vision being thinking, and we've defined thinking for our school district, community, and thinking, yeah, we are solving problems, complex problems. That's gonna come up later. We are, you're a thinker in our school district when you can collaborate with folks who are different than you. We will talk about that later. You, we're, you're a thinker when you unpack some things about yourself, identity work, your biases, your identity, who you are. That's gonna come up later. So thinking means something to us, and everything we do is to support us becoming a community of thinkers. And then we talk about educate, engage, empower. You will really see and hear how that's gonna come forward tonight as well. When we talk about engagement, and true engagement for us is very different from strategic compliance. When we get true engagement from our young people and adults, we really have to partner with one another, and it gets messy and complex. So please know that the supports and structures we're putting forward are about engagement. And educate, we know it's, it's different to educate a young person in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three than it was in nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven. Um, how we fund that is different to, so we will talk about what it means to be educating in this contemporary environment, and how we need to put together a budget request to support that. And then empower, we feel like we have a very inclusive approach to budgeting. It's a year-round process now. People are reminiscing earlier about previous budget processes in all of our careers and experiences that included, hey, this night will be the night that we talk about budget. We will talk about budget until two A., two AM. And we would probably get to, um, understanding individual line items that we had not talked about previously. That's a different approach now. When we say we're here to empower, it's everyone having a say in an inclusive process. So again, we always start here, but it's important for us to reiterate how this budget, this funding request is consistent with our vision and mission. And, we are now presenting to the board and the community for the first time that we are putting, putting forth a funding request that is consistent with our learning forward ICSD initiative. We have committed to, and have been boldly committed to, over the next three to five years, we want to work and allocate resources according, according to these things. And we wanna go into depth here before we get into a lot of numbers. And that first one, I wanna stress here, and we've had some beautiful displays of students as leaders and partners of this work. We're gonna say it tonight, we're gonna say it over and over again. The initiatives that are gonna be supported in this budget, the things that we would do going forward will be in partnership or led by young people. We've never said that before, and if we said it, we probably didn't know what it would look like. We now know what that looks like. We've had examples come before our board. What we do with regards to policy, representation in curriculum, funding, resource allocation will be in collaboration, close collaboration, in partnership or led by our young people. We will talk more about that later, too. Other themes that we wanna make sure we highlight, this one here, running for educator identity work. Now, you'll see in the funding request, our approaches and our commitment to really unpacking who we are as educators. Because to do this work well in a anti-racist, culturally responsive and inclusive way, we need to know who we are first as educators, and then how we show up and will be engineered for our young people. Yes, I'm gonna, we're gonna partner as a team, a leadership team, to talk about our funding request tonight. And maybe we'll start now with Mary and Lily talking about our learning forward ICSD work and our educator identity work, and what we're doing with this funding request to support this particular theme. Which one?
Yeah. So I, I'll start with talking about the micro-credential, which is a great partnership and created, thanks to Lisa Sahasravade, I wanna give her a shout out for the writing and the design of a micro-credential that speaks to helping educators understand and know who they are, their identity, and how that impacts the, the learning and the classroom community that they facilitate. And being able to offer that to all of our incoming educators in their first two years of employment is something that is reflected in this budget. And say, to piggyback on that, uh, you know, we're, we're really focused on engaging in some partnerships in order to support some of this work. So you'll see work with the Equity Consulting Group, the Center for Culturally and Logistically Responsive Teaching and Learning, and, uh, local group, Mora Branca is part of Training for Change as well.
We have, we have all the right students, um, and we have all the right adults. Now, it's important for us to understand who we are as the adults in leading this work. So the identity work is gonna be important for us now and going forward. And this budget request supports us in our efforts in that regard. Anti-racist curriculum for all, always so excited about this. We are receiving some pretty much international attention associated with what started, what, five years ago now? You know, the part of a, a line item or an innovation request as part of the funding request at the time. We brought together a couple dozen of our educators to start thinking about what it would look like to have our educate, our young people solve real-world problems that are relevant to their local community, connected to power, equity, inclusion, anti-marginalization. This work has taken off for us. So we really wanna talk about how we have built into the funding request funds to support more professional development and more support for this approach to teaching and learning, which I feel is the most impressive thing we've been doing. So, let's one of you, just share a little bit more about it. Yeah?
Start with Mary, huh? Well, I, I want to, again, shine, uh, real bright on our educators that are committed to this work. Four years ago, we had around it, just over a dozen teachers participating in it, to almost one hundred teachers this year with touchpoints throughout the year. And that is in collaboration with the Equity Consultant Group to design units that center student voice and engage them in real-world problems, challenges of their community. Absolutely. Um, and I'd also like to point out, too, that you'll see significant funds associated with what Mary and other educators have been leading exceptionally well around literacy, and especially early literacy, and how that can focus both on, um, skills and phonics development and also ensuring that kids understand identity, intellect, criticality, and joy as well. So, um, that's, that's been key. And lastly, arts integration. You'll see some funding requests in here in relationship to additional music and art, visual arts teachers as well. Knowing that for many, many years, education, public education has focused exclusively on the worship of the written word. We know that kids are smart in lots of ways, and the ways in which we can engage more students in expressing that brilliance, um, that's been, that's been really key for us. So we're certainly growing our, our arts program to ensure that, um, kids have much more access and it's connected to their interests.
Dr. Brown, do you want questions from the board as we go through? Do you wanna, if you can, roll through? We don't wanna interrupt the flow.
I can serve it to all the board. We can do it either way.
Just, uh,
If you got a question, please.
Right. Just, uh, as we roll through, and if not, we'll keep going. But it's, if you have a comment or question, just, just shout out.
Awesome. Spontaneously respond, as we like to say now.
There you go.
Yeah. But, as you're thinking, uh, please know, every image that we share has been carefully curated. This one right here, and Geo, you probably remember this. Our young people were at the, uh, technology department the other day. I think they're fifth graders, or fourth graders from BJM, fifth and fourth grade from BJM, fixing our one-to-one deployment, one-to-one device. So it's just awesome to see that happening right there, which is a part of, and we talk about the structures of support. We've learned a lot over the last two years, in addition to what we've always known, is that the support system needs to be in place for us to do this kind of bold and inclusive exceptional work. Including our technology supports, we are doing some things to enhance our support for our technology tools. Um, what we do know, we, we, there are some significant needs when it comes to facilities. We have included some supports in this budget to support some continuation of some efforts and some new efforts as well. Communication is another area of that our community, we all recognize as an area for our organization to grow. We're close to a hundred and forty-eight million dollar organization, and we've had no communications department. We hope that this, this budget, because of some reallocation of resources, some existing resources, we will be able to have a communications team going forward. So we can talk more as we, when we take questions at the end, but there are some support structures. Please know that we've been able to, we're using this budget to support as we move our work forward. And this is a slide and an image that we update annually, and just to give folks a sense of where our budget has been and where it's going. The funding request that we put forth to the community, to the board this evening, with hopes that it will then adopt at some point to put in front of our community, is gonna be at that number, a hundred and forty, forty-eight million dollars, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, ninety-eight dollars. In no sense, Rob. Anyway, we, we have, we have that number there, and that is an increase year to year of about two point five percent. Again, I'm just sharing some information that Ms. Verba so eloquently shared in previous meetings. But to see it visually in the way we've shared it before, that is the number. Also, now's the time when we annually, we used to go to Mr. Granger, now we're gonna turn to Ms. Verba. Even with that raspy voice, she can explain the difference, the difference between tax rate and tax levy better than anyone else in Tockins County. So Ms. Verba, I'm gonna turn to you to share the difference between, oh, come on, Verba. Yeah, 'cause no one else wants to do this right now, so you have to, you have to, you have to take, help us out there.
I'm gonna do my best, everybody. That's why I came home, because I don't think that the microphones could pick me up very well. Um, so the, the tax levy amount, right? So, um, New York State, a couple of, many years ago, um, we were asked to do a calculation to, um, see how much money per, uh, a formula that we would be allowed to levy, and there were a lot of ramifications if we went over, um, that calculation amount. And so, we've done that calculation, and as shared in other, um, formulas as well, we've added some money to that, um, to bring in the revenue that we need to balance the budget. We're doing that because we also have learned to look at the tax rate, right? So the tax levy is the total amount of money that we, as a school district, are asking, um, the, all of the shoulders to bear, right? All across the taxpayers, it's a total amount of money, um, and that's in the millions, right? And then, um, the tax rate is what it means to you as a taxpayer, right? So once we take the levy, and you actually put that into a formula, and you divide it across the total assessed value of the entire tax base of Ithaca City School District, that is, that calculates a rate, and the rate is the amount of money per thousand that your property is assessed at, that you would pay. And so, um, last year, we, our tax rate was sixteen dollars and eighty-four cents. For this coming year, we are looking to keep that, hold that flat at sixteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Um, that allows us actually to increase the levy, but with no harm to the taxpayer in terms of the rate. And so the rate is what you see, the levy is the total amount, and we will know, um, what the total assessed value is once the county assessor completes all their work, and that's usually in August. Um, and so, when, um, in years past, when we've shared information, we've always used the word estimated, and we will still do so in terms of the levy, because we still don't know exactly what the total assessed value is across all of the properties in Ithaca City School District that we can levy for taxes.
Yeah, we are at an important place, uh, in time for our school district and our school community when it comes to understanding this notion of tax rate versus tax levy. And I foresee over the next few months that this is gonna be the conversation to help our community understand what we mean by it. From my perspective, um, this notion of tax caps in New York State and paying only, only attention only to the tax cap number or the tax levy cap is probably antiquated. Um, I think we, we're at a place right now where our form of, the number for our tax cap is so far below what inflation is, which is also impacting the actual formally quote, I think, close to eighty percent of the school districts in New York State. So we're at a point where we need to really be clear about what conversations we need to have as a community to be fiscally responsible and to also be strategic in our planning. Because if we go back, there was a time when we were having this conversation about tax levy only and tax rate, or, and I was here, in twenty fourteen, when we were developing in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen budget. And because at the time, we were on the heels of some federal funding, a federal funding cliff, which we're gonna be quickly coming up upon in the near future, we had not been planning for it in certain ways, and because of the tax cap and tax levy conversations, we needed to go over the tax levy, and at the same time, we had to raise the tax rate. We are at a place right now where we anticipate a tax levy increase, but no tax rate increase. That will be different for us. And you'll see here historically where our tax levy has been. And I'm sure we'll talk about this more, um, a little bit later. But going back to the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteens, when we had that significant bump in our tax levy, and at the same time, I think it was around a five point two percent increase in our tax rate. That was very significant for our school community. And we had to get sixty-plus percent of our school community to say yes to us doing that. As you see here now, the, the levy that we anticipated, seven point two one percent. However, we must stress, the soundbite is our tax rate will be zero. We will not raise our tax rate, which is still gonna be one of the lowest, well, the lowest tax rate in our region, um, and if not beyond. Now, when we, when folks are asking about the history of our tax rate increases, this board, through the support of our community, a great team of educators working on putting the budget together year-round, we can put this on my, our tax rate has gone down in previous years. Last year, we had a, a slight bump in the tax rate, but we anticipate that staying the same going forward. So again, another visual that we will, we plan to put out here, um, and we hope to center our conversations around this. To do all the things we began with, as far as meeting the needs of our community, as far as providing an excellent school district. And we're gonna get into now the propositions and what we're gonna be asking folks to vote on here shortly, but some key dates. The vote will be May seventeenth, so we have some time to communicate and to educate our school community. We will have a budget hearing. We would love to hear any questions folks have in the format we've held before on May tenth. Just these days are still correct, right? All right. There happened a year when I had,
That's correct.
Right, all right. Proposition one will be the budget, that a hundred and forty-eight million dollars will be proposition number one. That will be on the ballot, and we hope folks will come out. It's gonna be a sunny day. Proposition two will be buses, as we have been using, we have been voting on the expenditure of funds for my capital reserve to purchase buses for years. And this year, there will also be some work that needs to be done on Northeast Elementary Schools, some site work. And Ms. Verba, can I trouble you one more time to talk about that site work that you've talked about before that's gonna take place at Northeast?
Absolutely. So if you've visited Northeast, you might see some, um, sort of yellow tape that, um, there's a wall that's actually degraded to a point now where we're really concerned about the safety of that wall. It's outside of the kindergarten classrooms, right? And so we really wanna tackle that this summer, um, remove that, create sort of a tiered element, um, to that, to the ground, because there's, um, an incline to that, that we think that kids could actually use that more of like a seating area where they can sit and learn. And then at the base of that, making sure that we are considerate of the, um, drainage issues as well outside of those kindergarten playgrounds. We're gonna enhance the drainage and also put a poured playground. So there's some, like, kind of a, you know, sponginess to that ground so that the kids can sort of use that as well as another space to play. So that's, again, outside of the, those kindergarten classrooms. If you go out back, um, toward the playground area there, you'll see that it's like right, it's right there on the, on the left-hand side. Um, and so we'll be removing the fencing there and creating a nice space for everyone. And that, we're not, we're doing separate from the capital project, because we believe that the capital reserve, that's, again, another really good place for us to be able to do smaller projects where we save money.
Thank you, Ms. Verba. Now, we are going to be expending funds from our capital reserve to do those two things, which we need to then replenish our capital reserve, so that's gonna be proposition number three. We're hoping our voters will allow for us to continue to fund that very important reserve fund so that we can do important projects just like that. And then, I don't, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Verba, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no. Proposition three, capital reserves, just as a reminder, it, it, they have, um, the way that we establish them, they have, um, a cap to them in terms of the amount of money that you fund them. And so when you're getting close to, to running out of the funds, you have to reestablish a new capital reserve, and we do this every couple of years. And so this is the establishment of a new capital reserve, and we are going to be increasing the amount of money in that capital reserve, mainly because we know that costs are going up, especially around, um, exploration of, um, if we wanted to do electric buses in the future, we wanna make sure that we have the funds available to do that.
And this,
Just Amanda, I hate to strain your voice, but you can just, um, do a real quick explanation of where the funds come from to go into the capital reserve?
Capital reserve is only funded if we end the year positively, right? So if we, if we end the year and dope, dip into fund balance, um, or, and, and we have fund balance to be able to fund the, the capital reserve or other reserves, that's how those are established, right? If we have years where we're spending into our fund balance, we would not be able to put money into that capital reserve. So again, we're creating kind of a, a catchment, again, one of those savings accounts that are for particular purposes, that are funded when we have years that we have the monies to be able to put into those, Rob.
Right, Amanda, and the, the budget amount that we all vote on, on May seventeen?
Yeah.
Thank you. May seventeenth, that's an estimated spending amount that we cannot exceed, but it doesn't mean we have to spend all that money throughout the year. And there, there could be some things that we didn't spend as much as we thought in estimating the prior year. So, there are funds that, uh, essentially savings throughout the year because we did not spend as much as we projected. So that's where, right, and then that's a catch basin for, for some of those reserves, uh, that are generated over the year. If we don't spend too much, right? Right, man. If we don't spend too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Verba. And then finally, this is, this epitomizes what I think of, when I think of an enhanced community partnership. Um, there's a small amount of land that's on the BJM property currently, the ICSD slash BJM, BLM property, that we wish to transfer over to, uh, GIA, so that they can expand the gym. Folks can drive by and see there's a sniffing amount of construction going on in that block. So we hope to expand that gym so that there can be some full-court, year-round basketball games going on in there. And that will require us to, uh, transfer just a bit of property, um, and this is proposition number four. Something that needs to be voted on by our school community. With that, we, those, those are the highlights and the presentation of our funding request. We now wish to engage in the ongoing dialogue about questions the board may have, any of the things you wish to share.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Like that one.
Stop sharing.
Yeah. Questions from the board, other things, things you wish for us to elaborate on?
I don't have questions, more statements than anything else. Uh, thank you, Amanda, for, um, sharing, even though your voice isn't a hundred percent. We know that you're, uh, the driver behind making all this happen, so thank you for your time and your effort. Um, I just wanna put out to the public, this is a process that we've shared, you know, during finance with, um, the different directors and, and the information that goes into building a budget, um, and it all comes to fruition at this meeting. Um, and also, we do understand that, you know, assessments are up, gas prices are up, um, and we're very extremely fortunate to be in a community that values education. And we've heard that resoundingly, um, and we think we've put together a budget that makes sense, but also serves the needs of our school district. Um, I, I think we've done a great job. I think, um, we focused on what needs to happen to keep this, this school district moving and being a leader in, in the education field for our students and our, and our teachers and our, you know, all the people we serve in this community.
Thanks, Chris, for your, uh, for your work as chair of the finance committee, not only this year, probably for a few years. Chris, so very much appreciate that effort. Um, while, um, while we're waiting, way in, um, and we talked about sustainability, meaning, I'm looking at learning forward ICSD and the initiatives and how, is there a sense of how much of learning forward is, it's embedded in this budget, but not with federal dollars that are gonna go away, um, the other debt funding cliff? So, kinda just talk about that a little bit.
Appreciate the question, and that's the very important reason why we are proposing that we keep the tax rate the same and, but however, raise the tax levy. Those additional funds that will come in because of us having the levy at the seven point two percent increase will allow for us to make these programs sustainable. Otherwise, we would be looking at moving away from FTE, support, a lot, a close to four and a half billion dollar worth of, um, programming in order to account for the funding cliff that will be forthcoming with the federal funds going anywhere. So we have a beautiful moment right now. Um, we are one of the few districts in our state probably that has this opportunity to not raise the tax rate and at the same time, raise the additional funds to make these programs sustainable. Every other, one of my colleagues is talking about those federal funds, when they go away, so do the programs. So do the innovation, and we're back to where we were just before the pandemic when we were looking at cutting significantly anyway, just to keep up with inflation. And to honor the collective bargaining agreements that we've all entered into. Like, we entered to a collective bargaining agreement most recently with, uh, one of our largest bargaining units, and we have, we're in the midst of a six-year deal with our largest bargaining unit that requires us to, uh, increase our budget more than the rate of, uh, a traditional tax cap. So I hope this helps you. Uh, this is a key year for us. We can make these programs sustainable and continue to move things forward in an innovative and strategic way. However, we, if we didn't take advantage of this opportunity, we would be having a different conversation.
So, uh, I need some help understanding, and maybe other people do, too. So we're raising the tax levy, how much? Seven point eight percent, is that right?
The, the tax levy will be at seven point two one percent.
Two one percent.
That is, that is, that is an increase from year to year of seven percent. The amount of funds that we'll bring in if we kept the rate the same. Because of the new growth and the new, the new taxable, uh, properties on the taxable.
Right. So I think myself and maybe others need to understand, uh, you know, what are the implications for, uh, going over the tax cap?
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, the, the sanctions that were in place previously, we've talked about that at this table before. Um, the, the laws of the STAR rebate, um, and there were some other sanctions over the years. Those sanctions are no longer in place. So, the, going over the quote-unquote tax cap, which is, in many ways, in my perspective, obsolete in the state right now, going over that, there will not be any penalties to our school community.
But do we need a super majority to pass this budget?
Yeah, we will need sixty percent of our voters saying yes to this, um, in order for that to happen. Otherwise, we are at a contingency budget or we're looking at doing another budget vote. Um, and I would share with the community right now, um, if not going over, if not getting to sixty percent, um, we, after some initial conversation, we're thinking about, we would just go to fund balance, and that would Um, we, after some initial conversations, we're thinking about, we would just go to fund balance, and that would be a significant pull from our fund balance. Um, which will put us in a pretty tough spot um going forward. Um, otherwise, we would be cutting programs immediately, and that's not something I would, so yeah, the imp- the negative implications associated with not um getting sixty percent are going very deeply into fund balance or significant cuts for next year. And we will be uh we will be recommending the significant shift to fund balance, which will result in us doing some other things next year.
Thank you for that, because I was confused.
Um, I just want to make a couple of comments to our community about um. You know, what we're seeing as we are going out and visiting these classrooms, this is me and uh my colleagues on the curriculum committee, Nicole and Pat, over the years is really exciting. I know we talk about numbers a lot. I know sometimes it feels like we could be making um widgets and not raising babies up to be leaders in the future, but let me tell you, someone who um has been waiting for this uh Titanic ship to turn around in a bathtub for quite some time, it's happening. Um, we're gonna make a concerted effort to try and share more about what's happening in our classrooms, what's happening in our core stages, what's happening, you know, on our fields um with you all, so you can take the ride with us. But um, don't let these professional bland suits and ties and facial expressions fool you. We are really, we could really make incredible headway with bringing kids joy. Keeping them connected together through their different racial and ethnic and language. Um, and gender barriers, especially in elementary, and um I just can't, I can't say enough how good it is to be in these spaces now and watching these kids learn and feel and express joy in a way that I don't think any of us on this board can recall. Things were not like this when I was a kid, let me just say that. Elementary rooms have kiddos in six, five or six different places uh with self-discipline. They're engaged in assignments around the room. Technology is as seamless as it can be under, you know, distressing circumstances sometimes. And uh, just to plead for our community, please support this budget. This is a good thing we are doing for our community, our families and our little people. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I will say that I tried hard to make my outfit not bland today, but I appreciate the feedback.
So I have a a quick question. I think it's also important for um our community, um and most of our community, if not all of our community already knows that uh the education that we have been providing for the past two hundred years has been significantly disrupted over the past two years and required significant change as well. Um, that also has come along with federal funds, and so can we just briefly talk about um some of the increase that is reflected in this budget? Um, and where that money comes from and why it would be important for us to be in a position when that money goes away? Uh, why we're, why should we be in a position to continue those innovations? Uh, those F T Es, those teacher positions, et cetera?
Yeah, I can um invite my team to jump in here, but I will begin with um just thinking about the F T E, the structures of support. Um, throughout the pandemic, we were hearing from folks saying that uh we need to be prepared for the increasing mental health needs of both students and staff. And so this budget, over the last two years, we have added social workers, we've added uh engagement specialists in our hallways. Uh, we are adding, we've added some additional administrative F T E, for example, at our high school, to accommodate some needs. So we've added some supportive structures over the past two years to address the emerging needs in response to a global pandemic. We, in this budget, we continue those support structures, um, because we all realize that we are still in the midst of a pandemic. So as as far as those F T Es up there, I would say we we needed those and we continue to need those for the foreseeable future, and this budget supports that. Other things you're thinking about, team, that will continue, that we put in place?
I'd also just like to clarify and remind folks, knowing that Amanda Verba's voice is is not great. And she did an entire presentation a few weeks ago about uh the special aid fund. And so folks can definitely revisit that on our on our website. It's both on the board page and on the budget page. So I think it's important for folks to take a look at that. Um, and the special aid fund typically involves uh grant funds, right? Uh, we received the ARP and S R funds very um quickly. There were no guidelines associated with where we were supposed to place those. Um, and so you'll notice that there's a a number of items that are recoded into special aid, which Amanda has also talked about um at length when she went over the uh the budget document uh for review as well. So I think it's important for us to to remember that there's that transition there. And that maintaining the tax rate, having a zero percent increase to the tax rate um allows us to to continue uh those programs even with that decoding. So I think it's important for folks to understand that.
And some of the funds were, it was one time purchases. We're not gonna go out and buy all new desks all over again, Dan, right? No, we're not gonna, right, we're not going, it's not, it's not, we're not gonna buy all new desks for the whole district all at once, no. Right, so that was, that was a chunk of the money. So that's not something that we really are be, are going to looking, we're not looking to have to replace that funding on those next budgets. Because that's what that money was useful, not not something that was going to have to be cut right away. And I think we're also, we're also getting forward on time here, and some of those funds, you know, those are, we're already exiting them, right? Uh, Amanda, I believe, as we move through twenty 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 to twenty three, some of those funds are already dropping off, I believe. Slowly, right, so we're already going through this process of leaning away from those federal title one grant dollars. And that's what, that's what this budget is trying to recognize.
We're trying to recognize.
We are weaning ourselves away from, not waiting for a fiscal, but but weaning ourselves away.
One other item I wish to underscore too, um that you mentioned, uh class sizes. We made some significant adjustments to class sizes. We had sections um during the pandemic. Um, we anticipate keeping those class sizes the same and those same sections going forward. So that's another one that folks are talking about, um, what's sustainable and what are we gonna keep going, moving forward? Class size is a big one for this school.
Very helpful. Thank you, Dr. Brown, and only just a quick point of clarification for folks when they see the ballot that will be headed your way in preparation for May seventeenth. Uh, proposition for the conveyance of real estate property, we will actually be conveying that land to the city of Ithaca. And folks should be aware of that, that the 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 land will be given, if the voters approve that we can convey this land, the land will go to the city of Ithaca.
Oh, thanks for that clarification. Other.
I would, I would like to have clarification about the tax cap. Because I feel like we've talked about that so much, and now it's not an issue. So what's happened to it?
Well, one, the uh sanctions that were connected to the tax cap, or any attempt for any school district to go over the tax cap are no longer in place. That was a big one for us in previous years. Um, the year in which we did go with the tax cap. Um, we had to have hard conversations with our community and debating about if it was worth it with those sanctions in place. So those sanctions are no longer in place. Um, the number is a weird number. Some school districts have had a negative tax cap, some school districts have had a very, very high tax cap. The numbers and the factors that go into the formula, from my perspective, I keep saying from my perspective, uh, need to be adjusted. We need a new formula to come up with that number going forward. Like, the number doesn't really account for inflation that's close to seven percent. I think the number right now, as we speak, Mr. Aze, you know it better than I, is around seven point six eight percent.
Um, that's a, that's a moving number.
That's a moving number, exactly. Uh, the tax cap formula would not account for a number like that. Um, the tax levy limit for most school districts in our state right now hovers around two and a half percent, which is where we are. And if school districts across the state were to not go over the tax levy limit, when thinking about putting together their budgets, we would be looking at a significant crisis, not only here, but across the state. When it comes to replenishing your reserves, not honoring or not paying your employees in the way they need to be, need to be paid in the midst of a pandemic with inflation going up in those ways. So from my perspective, that number is one that we need to shift away from until the formula is corrected. And may, and from my perspective, focus more on the tax rate, the impact to the taxpayers in our community. Um, which what we're saying in previous years has gone down, the tax rate number, and this year we hope to maintain the same.
So I'm gonna follow up for some clarity, so because it's, I frankly, the tax cap is very hard to understand anyway. Um, at least for someone who's not, who does not work in finance. So this is not like a product of Cuomo no longer being our governor. This is a product of inflation, is that, that's what I'm understanding here.
The, the, I mean, um.
It changed, uh, well, Amanda, you know, this is not the first year that the the penalties associated with overriding cap have gone away. That happened prior year.
Twenty nineteen.
Right, twenty nineteen, so that's several years ago. And um, so that was prior administration, but frankly, the tax levy limit was a product and a a favorite of the prior governor, and Andrew Cuomo liked it. And of course, we are in a low inflation rate environment. So the tax levy limit was based on two percent or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. And so that less is the issue. And um, we are no longer in a two percent world. For years, we talked about, we're in a two percent world, we're in negotiation, we talked about two percent world, inflation is almost zero for multiple years uh in a row. Um, that has changed, uh, and yes, and frankly, uh, the Andrew Cuomo is no longer in in power uh in Albany. That, that force was, that was wedded to this tax levy limit and all that it entailed, the penalties and forcing entities, municipalities to spend less is is no longer there. And yes, lots of federal money has come into Albany. Um, and there is not an, there's not a budget yet from Albany from those three entities. Um, they're still working it out. That does not affect our budget in that we're talking about spending, not revenue. Amanda will point that out. What we vote on is how much shall we spend? And that is the number that we are working with. Whatever Albany comes up with eventually, that will work out. Uh, as we work toward the final tax rate calculation. But uh, the tax levy limit is a, it is a human creation. It is not a, it's artificial. It's not, it's not written anywhere in stone. Uh, but it was created at a time uh that has come and gone. It is, uh, that was years ago. Yet the, and the world has changed, and I think Albany uh recognizes that. Um, and that's why they took away the penalties a few years ago, I mean, two thousand nineteen. Um, and realistically, uh, we cannot settle a, we cannot settle a a union contract at a two percent inflation rate increase. And yes, we are settling contracts at five percent in that range. And five percent compounded um is a number that two percent compounded can never ever reach. Yeah, if that's helpful.
I do also, um, Aaron, it may be helpful too. So Amanda shared the other day with our team, ASBO, the American Association of, or I'm sorry, the Association of School Business Officials, which is a New York State organization. Um, put together a report that indicated that ninety two percent of New York State school districts are both, their tax caps are below the rate of inflation, right? So when Dr. Brown talks about how it's an antiquated formula, um, it really, inflation is a huge reason for his stating.
That's really helpful. I have, then I have one uh follow up question as well, and forgive me if this was covered already. But I, so the tax rate's not going up, the tax levy is. Does that, if, that's fine, so with that seven percent increase, is, could that levy impact the tax rate in future years? I'm just trying to anticipate questions that might come my way and just really get a great understanding of this.
A great question, a hypothetical question, um, but I.
Amanda.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer. So Aaron, we, we actually, you know, the the two things that we can control, we cannot control the total assessed value, right? And that, that's on the county assessor, right? And and the things that go on the rolls, the new construction, all the things that that are happening in our community, right? That, that is, those are the factors that we cannot control. What we can control is the amount of taxes, taxes that we levy and or the rate. And so in years prior, right, we've let the levy, we've set the levy, and therefore, we put that into a formula, and that tells us what the rate would be. This year, we're actually, we know what the rate is, and we're backing into the levy amount. So we're just reversing the process this year, right? So to answer your question, we do have control in terms of what we want our tax rate or our tax levy to be. Those are the two things that we can control, right, to balance our budget. Year after year, what goes into the formula that Dr. Brown and Rob was speaking to is the levy amount. And each year, that just restarts with the levy amount that you did the year prior. That goes into the factor in the formula of the the two percent, if that's the lesser of the two values, that's what goes in the formula. There's also a tax base growth factor, which is severely underestimated every year, because it doesn't take into account a lot of the the new properties that goes into the rules. So there are things that we cannot control. What we can control is the rate and the levy, right? And so this year, that's, we're just putting, we're actually looking forward to then back into the levy amount versus letting the levy drive us to the rate. That's the difference this year.
It's very innovative, Amanda, because we, we've never really done it that way before.
We've talked about it. I mean, Chris will tell you, at finance, every year, we've sort of been like, oh, if we did this, right? We have, we've been tracking this year after year. There's many millions of dollars that if we would have gone rate to levy and held the rate steady, we could have done it, but we didn't require ourselves to go over the tax cap calculation years prior. We had stated, you know, we, we didn't have a pandemic, we didn't have federal aid falling off the books. We didn't have emerging needs of young people and staff that we must have dropped quickly, right? And and they have money and they're of value. And so this year is, there is a uniqueness to this. And I do feel that we are prepared to set us up for next year and the year after, and the year after that, by thinking about this in a way that we don't harm the taxpayers.
And Amanda, and I mentioned that um the tax levy limit is a human construct, well, um, I misspoke of it. It is a political construct, and that's, that is the basis of it, and that really was my point as I wandered through that. But uh, it is, it was, it is a political construct from politicians in Albany. And we have to deal with that, but we also have the realities of the world, realities of the community, the realities of what um, the kids need every day. Uh, and so I prefer to not live in the political world. I prefer reality and what we need for the kids. And uh, if we can keep the tax rate the same, uh, we can control that. And um, and and increase the budget two and a half percent, two point five four percent or five nine percent. Um, your, last year, the budget went up six percent. We're just increasing the budget two and a half percent. So I'm not sure how with everything that is going on, we could control costs and more than that. I don't, we couldn't have a negative increase to the budget, but uh, two and a half percent for actual dollar amount that we're, we're voting to spend is a, that's a very realistic number. And some would say, geez, isn't it, your costs are going up more than that, aren't they? Well, yes, but we have an assessed value of many properties that have changed hands, especially in downtown Ithaca. Sometimes two or three times their value that now is being assessed and taxed. So that's where, that's where this, these funds are coming from, and uh, we're able to hold it at zero. That's helpful, I mean.
Mr. Malcolm, can I say something?
I, I was just gonna actually echo what Rob was saying, um, and also to
I, I was just going to actually echo what Rob was saying, and also to clarify some of Aaron's questions. There's several factors that go into, you know, what happens, the rate, the tax levy, excuse me, but also the assessed value. So to ask if it's going to change and affect things down the road, all of the above factor in. So it's difficult to say that, you know, this increase is going, of course, it changes the numbers moving forward. But there is actually no option as far as a flat increase because we have things baked in, whether you look at TRS or, you know, the increases that we have factored in with our bargaining units. But Amanda does a great job with her slides where she shows our increased amount over the years and the factor, and also compares it to the other areas. And I know we'll cover that moving forward. And I'll actually dig into my files, and I'll try to find it and kick it out to you for clarifying. Or Amanda, I bet you can find it easier than I can. But we also always do a great job of sharing that forward with the public to let them know where we've been, you know, where our trend has been year over year and where we fall this year. And I know I jumped around a lot, but hopefully that's helpful.
Rob, I also noticed time is leaving us quickly for this presentation. This will be another conversation over the next board meeting. And I always feel compelled to, one, thank Amanda and Chris Malcolm for their work, especially in the finance committee. I know Amanda does a lot of the work, but Chris, you also helped to, to facilitate it. So take the compliment and let it, just let it sit there. I'm not done speaking. And then to remind our community, one of the things that I greatly appreciate about the budget development in the Ithaca City School District is that it is a continual year-long process that does not stop. And so you can take a look at the budget website that's on the district website. You can see all of the finance committee meetings and minutes, the conversations, the main topic points. And as Rob also indicated, continual negotiations with our employees to try and provide the best compensation that the district can. So it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing process, and I'm just thankful for the amount of time and energy that folks put into it. And looking forward to the questions that our district folks will have for us. I'm done talking now, Chris.
I'm just going to say thank you. That's it. And you, you actually stole, one of my points was that if you please go to the finance committee meetings, where since January, we've been talking about the budget process, reviewing all the data. And the last two months, we've literally gone to the line item budget and reviewed different areas just to share that forward and be as transparent as possible with the public.
Other, we just started five after six, but other question?
I don't know if folks are frozen or just on my end. They're frozen for everybody else as well.
I'm not, can you hear me?
No, we're not frozen.
But I can't, I can't hear or see Rob.
Me neither. I think, I think those of us that are called in, I think it must be a board issue. I'll text someone.
I can, I can, oh, yeah, Rob's, I can see him, but he's frozen. Yep.
So with that being said, for those folks who are still joining us, it is seven o'clock. I will ask for the meeting to be closed, and please, please, please join us over the next couple of weeks, and please take a look at the budget website. And if you have any questions, please contact any board member. We would love to engage in dialogue with you all. So with that being said, I'll close this meeting, and we'll see everybody soon.
Thanks all for your patience with me tonight. Appreciate it.
Awesome job.